You lead us in our invocation tonight.
I will. Father, we thank you so much, God, for this day and Lord, we just ask you to begin this meeting. Father, give us wisdom where we need it. And God, I pray that we would represent our city in a light manner, Father, like you. And God, we just love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And I believe we have the Boy Scouts to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Awesome.
I can't remember what they.
They teleparted so good.
When you guys are ready.
All right. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, some may have tried. That's good. Awesome. All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorton.
Here.
Marty Lindelberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Dawn Rollins.
Here.
And Jimmy Condon.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present, so we'll start with the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda as it was mailed? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopted as mail.
A second.
Have a motion a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from August ninth, two zero, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any changes to the meeting minutes? We have a motion on that?
I'll make it.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no.
I've got a chance to have.
That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I have questions, comments regarding an agenda item. Do I do that now?
No, just wait. Well, I'll let you talk during that time. All right, we'll close the public forum and go into our business reports. Walter, you know, start with the planning commission.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we've got a little bit going on again here. Our eighteenth, or on the August, on August eighteenth, regular meeting, it was a slow one. It was just a lot split and a lot line adjustment that we approved. But then things started picking up with our September seventh special meeting with Juliette Ritchie, which we now have a timeline for presenting the draft future land use map and master street plan to the public. So that's starting off on October the tenth. We will be releasing the documents, the draft documents, which is the, just the future, the generalized, no zones, no R one, no R two, no, nothing of that, just generalized and then possible future of street plan, so possible new connections, whatnot. So that, those documents will be released along with a survey, and so that, a link for that will be on the city website. And it will also, I think, have some paper ones printed up, but as far as getting the info from it, the bestest way to do it, online. And then after that, the twentieth, we will be having a open house at the fire station, and as I understand it, the fire department is cooking hot dogs and hamburgers for us. So that'll be nice. Juliette Ritchie, who's the consultant who's been working with us, she will be giving a presentation of the updates for the public, and we'll be taking comments and all of that. Then.
Is that the same thing that's down here?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Then on November the tenth, we will be having a special meeting just to talk about the survey results. We'll have them in by then because we're running them. The survey we're running from October the tenth through the first, through November the first. So that's when we're running the survey, and so by the November the tenth, we'll have those back and we'll integrate survey results and then our comments from our open house. That'll be on the tenth of November for a special meeting. And then the seventeenth of November, we'll have a public hearing to consider the changes and then possibly make a recommendation for city council at your guys' December meeting. Then, this month, our planning commission meeting coming up this Thursday, we're finally getting that planned unit development application in, which was the subdivision that was looking for variances, and then we did, looked at it and said that that was a much more feasible route to go. And so we're finally getting that application in, and Scott Oliver has resigned, so we're down another member. And so we're now down two. So, yeah, a lot going on. And, yeah, so that's, I think that's it. Any questions for me? Got a lot.
Any questions for Walter? I would just encourage again, talk to somebody and let them know that we are trying to change that zoning code. It will affect everybody in some way. And as of.
Not immediately, but.
Not immediately, but it's gonna have changes. It's gonna change, it's gonna change our zoning codes and our process of approving and denying, what we approve, what we deny. So far, at the planning commission meetings, Stephanie has been.
Is our attendance.
That's, that's our public input, so, and not that there's anything wrong with that, she's been great input, but this is something that, it affects the community and the thought is, it affects it in a positive way, but it's gonna have negative impacts to someone, for sure. And not only that, but the more eyes we can have looking at those documents.
We can mitigate it.
That's right. The more mistakes we can, we can find now and get out of it, because it's not gonna be a perfect document.
Never will be.
It never will be.
It's a living document.
Our issue right now is that it has, it has been a static document for far too long. So, okay, thank you, Walter.
Thanks very much.
Tracy.
Hi. Oh. I didn't exactly know where this part. I was gonna tell you that our disbursements are up quite a bit this month. I'm happy about that. I don't know what happened, but anyway, the numbers turned out good. I do wanna point out on the, on the graph, not on the graph, but on the table, on the left-hand side in the middle, it says arraignments, that's A-R-N-M-T, and I've got the dismissed and the not guilty's. I broke those down because I think there was a little bit of confusion before. I want you to know that the DM is dismissed tickets, and those are just gonna be like, there's not very many that are actually dismissed. It's just like a fix-it ticket. Like if their brake lights aren't working and they come in, you know, they come in and show us that that's been fixed and we have the judge sign off on that, that that ticket has been dismissed. And then it was merged with the not guilty's, and the not guilty's, you know, that just means we're gonna bump them over to the trial side, and they'll come back and talk to the prosecutor or the judge. But I wanted to make sure you guys didn't think that there were hundreds of tickets being dismissed every month, because that is not the case. It's just most of them are like, hey, I want the opportunity to talk to somebody else about this before I pay the ticket. Okay? So I wanted you to know that part. We, our numbers keep going up on how many people are actually coming to court. They just, they keep pouring in. So, anyway, Thursday the first was our prosecutor's, Jason Boiski, that was his last day, and so now we're working with Jay Moore. And I think he's gonna be on site, and I'm looking forward to working with him. I'm gonna go to Farmington and see how he's been doing things over there, just to see if we can make our process a little bit smoother. I think that they wanna take some stuff for us, from us, the way we're doing it, after we had phone calls with the court clerk over there, and I think there's some things they're doing that we could incorporate over here and make things just a little bit smoother. And that's about all I've got, I guess. I, our tickets current month are about the same as what they were last year, and they're up quite a bit from what they were last month. So, that's about what I have.
Any questions, Tracy?
Everything working okay with us at county?
Yes.
So like sure before.
Yes, it works really well. And we are reaching out to more people on Zoom too. Like, we have people now, you guys are the best, definitely the best. Washington County does the best. But we do have other people reaching out to us now, and we get to talk to people that are like in rehab or something, so we're having less failure to appear because we actually get to Zoom with them and they get to take care of their trial over Zoom. And that's been really good for, for several people. It's good for us, it's less paperwork. So.
Good for all of us.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it saves a lot of money if they're not trying to transport people and find people and, so, I think that's all I have.
Any other questions for Tracy? Thank you. See you later.
Rushing out to the next. Thanks, thanks.
Blair called. She is sick today, so she won't be here. We have her report. Are there any questions on the library report? I'm still blown away by how many checkouts and how many in-person visits we have coming into West Fork Library. Just so everyone knows, year-to-date, we've had twenty-three thousand items checked out at the library, and we've had almost twenty-two thousand in-person visits at the West Fork Library so far this year. So, pretty amazing. And they've answered one thousand and thirty-three questions.
What is, what is she planning on doing with that lot?
Good question. So, she has some furniture that the library's purchased.
If she puts it in there, nobody will see it.
Good point. The lot needs to be mowed.
It, most definitely.
Yeah. So initially, there was a, an idea to make trails through the lot. That didn't pan out, and the lot has grown up, and no one has mowed it. We have discussed that, and we will get the lot mowed.
It's pollen-aker.
It is.
No, you're right. It was, it was a project that did not work out, and it's time to move on. But to answer the larger question, yes, there is some furniture that, there's some plans for the lot, but it's one of those things where we're, we're not in a hurry to, to do anything with the lot, just because we have it, and it can be so many different things. The question is kind of what, what do we wanna do? How do we, how do we wanna best utilize it over there without putting a ton of money into something if we're not sold on it yet? Any thoughts on that?
No, but there has been several complaints about the pave, not, not paving it and like the big hole, I guess that's a big water puddle.
Are you talking about just the library lot itself?
Right, and some of the library, like.
So Blair does have a grant to get that paved, which is something that we've been trying to get in place. Isaac, I think, is going to do some, some sewer work in conjunction with that, so we know we need to do some, I think it's a sewer line that runs across that, that, that we've had several issues with. So basically, we've been waiting. When they come in to do the lot, we're gonna go ahead and rip everything up and have it tore up at one time. But do you know when, do we have anything scheduled? I know we just got the, okay with the grant.
She said like the week, the last week of this month, we're supposed to meet with David Grant.
Okay.
Beaver Watershed Alliance, which is, we should got the grant from to learn more about the grant process and what we have to do, so hopefully they'll move forward within the next, I mean, none of that's fast, but probably, I was hoping in six months, there's, we should probably see.
Something, maybe. And so, just to be honest, and you guys, you guys remember this as well as I do, but we were, we were crunched for funds trying to get that thing to come in because of drainage issues, mold issues, some different things, and there just wasn't enough money to get that paving done at that time. The library does have some building funds, but they weren't enough to, to put in a paved parking lot. So it's been one of those things, wait until we can get some funds put together to do it and do it right, and do it once. So, yep. Anything else on the library? Chief Nelson, Police Department.
I hate Blair's sick. I'm glad that I don't have to go behind her tonight. She's always got a lot of exciting things to say. We had three hundred and sixty-two calls for service, a hundred and forty-three citations, with a hundred and eight warnings, and we had forty-five warrants, which was a little low for us on the warrants. West Fest was this weekend, I thought it went really well. I had two big takeaways from that. My officer saying LaBamba, that I just found out, and.
Did a good job.
Did a good job, and then we had to turn off his mic on the next one, so.
Can't sing George Drake.
He cannot sing, yeah. It is not America's Got Talent. And then my wife came home, I saw her, she walks in the door with a fire department bracelet on and a fire department patch. I don't know how that happened, but that's cutting pretty close to home.
She got to where the fire department's at.
You guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Nelson? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Isaac is not here either. He's been sick.
The two I had questions for.
I know.
When are we gonna do something with the water leak on McKnight? Because it's starting to dip.
Yeah, the road, the road's starting to fall apart there.
Okay.
We're gonna try to get it to date, so I'm, I'm.
Kinda worried about it right there.
When I, when I came home, they had, is that Westwood, that second street going into West Fork Acres? They had that blocked off and had a big hole. I could just see a head sticking up out of the hole. So, I would say you just haven't made priority yet.
It's been leaking for two weeks.
And I promise you that it hasn't been priority. So, it, I would just direct you to the, the water budget and the amount of money we made or lost on water versus the amount of money we made or lost on sewer. And that's, that's all. I'm just saying it's, that was not.
Those comparison. Well, the only sad thing is, it's on that resurfaced, and now there's a dip in it.
Yeah, it's kinda mixed it up.
You know, the week we had it resurfaced, we already had to cut two chunks in it, you know?
I'm sure the leak's in the middle of the road.
Yes, it is. Coming up.
The middle of the road.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not good.
So Isaac has a report in here, his committee met this month.
So on Phillips Street, I know that you all found the, well, Pip found it, just kidding, she really did, but did it get fixed?
It got fixed, and then they had to go back and fix it again the next day.
I noticed that.
So apparently, and I don't know if anyone, Dawn may remember this, they told Isaac there used to be a laundry mat back there behind that.
I'm not that old.
But Jan said, I must have moved.
Behind what?
No, Phillips Street.
Oh, Phillips Street.
Yeah, I don't remember anything back there.
Right across from Harps.
No, I don't remember.
Dawn might, I don't, no, no, I don't ever remember that.
So what, what Isaac?
Did Paula, did Paula say yeah, or she said, mm? Before my day.
Isaac said that when they went over and fixed it, so it was a pretty bad leak, but they fixed it and they found there was a manifold there that was shooting back into the lot behind one of those houses, and it was, there were three taps, I think, shooting back, and they were all just like right there together. So they capped them off, thought they had it fixed, but another piece of that line just, I guess it was weakened in that same spot, so it blew out once the pressure got back on it. So they, they did get it fixed, but it took.
So are there still more? I noticed on like the minutes or something where he thought, what was it, Carl Holley Plumbing, I guess, came out or something?
Yeah.
Is that the leak detector?
Yeah. So are all of them found now, or we're still thinking there's some?
He still thinks there's a leak over in that area. And then we've got one on McKnight, and then like I said, I don't know what happened in West Fork Acres this afternoon, but at four o'clock, they were, they ran in it. So Nick is not here either, but he did send me an email right before the meeting. We, we do have the sewer plant closed, the compaction tests have all been made. We are down to now, we need to get it seeded.
So what is the plan for that, all that area over there?
Good question, Misty. What is your plan for that area?
I don't know. I mean, I was just asking, I mean, is it gonna be like?
Remember when it ran, it was hard.
Really good.
Soccer fields or disc golf or trails, or, I mean, you know, shits the thought.
Grow some tomatoes about this area. So it's, it's gonna be a beautiful piece of ground over there, ten to fifteen acres. We don't have a plan for it. There's been a multitude of things talked about, from, from doing nothing to doing a dog park, to moving a stage down there. The, the beautiful thing is, the sky's the limit, and, and we don't have to do anything right now except for get grass growing on it by December thirty-first. Now that's, we have to do that. But my idea is that we will get a, an aerial picture of that, so that we can sit down and we can start looking at different things. I don't know. I don't know what we're gonna do. I know that I certainly want pie in the sky, well, don't even say pie in the sky. I'm hoping that we're able to get a trail that goes from there and ties into, I've talked to Chad and TJ, what we're thinking is, if, if we can get an easement behind the two private residences there, we would like to bring a trail, and it would essentially come right down the middle of the disc golf course. That would disturb the less baskets and, and you would be less likely to get hit by a flying disc. So that's a hope that we can get accomplished there. We have, I don't know if you guys have been down there, but we did, we took that bank and instead of it being a jagged bank, we, we rolled that bank back. Partly, we wanted to do that just for aesthetics, but the Beaver Watershed Alliance wanted us to do that as well, so that when it does flood, that water can come up in there and then come back out of there. So the idea was that would make it, it would do less damage if we put a slope on that. So, but from our aspect, I think it works better as a park too, because it essentially acts as another beach, much like what we have at Riverside. So, but to answer your question, we don't have any, any concrete plans. We have a bare canvas. So I will say along that line though, and this is why I'm saying the water leak's not a priority, but when we initially sought out quotes to get that filled in and graded and everything, that company had quoted us a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. When it came time to start that, their bid went from one hundred and sixty-eight thousand up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Jesus, wow.
We told them no, and we went and rented equipment and bought a, or not bought, but rented a fuel tank, and those guys have, they've spent hours and hours. We did contract someone for eighty hours. We're probably gonna contract them for a little bit more. But the last time I talked to Isaac, I think we had fifty-five to sixty thousand in that. Now, we haven't done anything else. I'll grant you that, John. We've, we haven't done a whole lot else but pick up rocks and pipes and, but if you go down there and look at that, it's, it's not just dozer smooth. They've, they've picked it pretty good. I, I believe Chad can speak to this more than I can, but I think we're in a pretty decent shape that we will be able to mow it without tearing something all to pieces while we do it, so.
How many workers?
Spend a lot of time down there.
Yeah.
How many workers does Isaac have for him? I think that should probably be mentioned as well, just.
How many does he have?
Hmm, well, three?
Three and a half.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And we just hired one of those, so he was down to two and a half there for just a little bit, but.
I thought it was getting pretty slim.
And we didn't have a lot of applicants apply either. And of the applicants who did apply to that position, zero had experience in that type of position. So again, that kinda goes back to what we talked about the last meeting, we need to look at some of those pay scales, so. Anything else on water and sewer?
I think it says in the minutes that the partnership, the ARDO partnership is moving forward. So was that just from?
That's just from our meeting. We, to my knowledge, we still haven't received anything back from them since we, we sent our resolution back.
Okay.
Yep. I was hoping that they would've gotten something to us.
Yeah, I was gonna get excited.
Yeah. All right. Chad, can you have some partial report?
Before I start that, I will say, as far as the grass is concerned down there at the sewer plant, I think Isaac's plan is to, to not mow it for a while, let it grow up, get some, potentially brush aug it a few times, let it get well established, but ultimately, the goal is for us to get it to where we can, can get it to where we just mow it, you know, as we mow other parts of the city parks and other things. But, but for a while, I think he's planning on just brush aug it a few times, depending what we're gonna do it down there and when, but for a while, just let it grow up and brush aug it a little less often than, than mowing it weekly and things like that, so just wanted to clarify that. But I don't have a lot to report. We mainly just, this month, have just worked on maintaining upkeeps and small projects and repairs and things at the parks. We did get our flag football program going. We, we wound up with forty-one participants, which is quite a bit. That's twice what we've had the last couple of years, COVID hurt our numbers, but I still think that's probably the most we've had, probably since I've been doing it at least. So those are good numbers. We have four teams. They have started practicing, they'll start games next week. And like I said, other than that, we've just been trying to keep the parks in, in good shape and maintaining them. I will, I'd like to commend the West Fest Committee and all those involved. I thought it went really well, and they put on a great event again, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of hard work goes behind that, and so I do wanna commend them and thank them for that. There's a lot that's done by just volunteers.
All of it's done by volunteers.
Well, I was, I was getting paid to help, John.
Thank you.
Most of it, yeah. Most of them are volunteers, but I was on the clock a little bit.
Yes.
But, yes, most of it's done by volunteers, and so I thought they did a good job, so that's really all I got.
And we thank the Parks Department for all their help. They helped, and a couple of city guys, but the parks was all in.
Do what we can. Do what the mayor tells us. So.
Any questions for Chad?
How's like the stage or the plans for it?
We're still working on that. Our original plans was just to put a stage down there, and, and we've gone a little beyond that. We wanna put some bathrooms and build that in with it as well, so it's taking a little bit longer, but it's definitely some.
Oh, take your time then.
Definitely something we're doing. We're probably gonna do it kinda in stages in hopes to still be ready by, you know, next spring for sure, but with what budget we got left in our capital outlay, we're gonna get started on it for sure. But we're still trying to get some numbers. We don't wanna get, we're, we're gonna do it ourselves, kinda contract it out and do it in stages. And we could save a lot of money doing that way, but we still are trying to get a good idea. We don't wanna get started into it and then it be more than we thought, so that's really where we're at, trying to get some, some more concrete numbers on what it's gonna cost in it this way. So, yeah, we're still working on that for sure, and we're looking, I think we've got a good plan. I hate to say this, I think we've got a good plan for restrooms and bathrooms, restrooms at Riverside as well. That's something that's probably gonna be, we're looking at some numbers there to work in in next year's budget, but it's actually something we can get started on now and have it ready early next year, is our plan. And we got some other projects, we're looking at costs for these projects, so, because it is budget time, it's getting there, so we're kinda looking ahead and seeing what we're gonna have to be able to do next year and, and finish out this year as well, so. But that's where we're at. We're still, it's gonna get done, it's gonna get done in the next few months, but it kinda got more complicated than we thought it was gonna be, but that's a good thing. We really need an extra set of restrooms down there, but the trail and disc golf and other activities, the ones that the concession just don't handle, that is for us. So, that's where we're at.
Awesome. Great news.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. So what he's saying is someday in the very near future, West Fork may be a city without porta-potties.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're working on that. We're gonna get that down. I don't know. There may always be one community center, but other than that, we may even get rid of the rest of them. So I like moving there.
I know.
Anything else? Thank y'all.
Thank you again, Chad. Chief Myers.
Don't be mad at me. It sounded like a Travis deal, so. Uh, my call volume was down a little from the previous month, from ninety-five one, I think, to sixty-three. So, but it helped cause we need to get ready for a pancake breakfast. So, um, air packs, I know I keep harping on it, but this is such a huge blessing to us. They should have them maybe at the end of this week, first next week. So real excited about that. Travis is gonna be gone after this week for two weeks to inspect the one class, which with our potential growth, uh, will help us maybe to interpret codes a little better, um, doing final inspections, things like that. So plus him going, him being instructor, he'd be able to teach and sort of, uh, yeah. So that'll, that'll be a big help. So our pancake breakfast did go great. Um, very pleased with it. Chief Docker, he took the reins to most of that. So see him out, tell him, you know, he did a good job, but then I thought he did real good. Ended up with about four hundred and seventy-one people who accounted, raised around thirty-four hundred dollars, which was great. We started this pancake breakfast in depositing numbers, which was, I mean, after we bought everything. So we, we, so with that, you know, I definitely wanna thank, you know, Ozark Electric, Sam's Club, um, Harps, the In-Or Meat Processing, Highland Dairy, Life Source, Tyson Foods, NWA Defense, been a stitching, the West Fork Schools donated some, uh, tables and chairs. Parks Department gave us some trash cans. So it, it took a, it's a group effort. So thank you to all of our community that came out and, and everybody that, that showed up. We really appreciate it. And that's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Myers? So just so that everyone knows, um, Travis is actually running for the Greenland City Council.
I tried to talk to my.
Could be some truth today.
Yeah, he's excited about it.
But, yeah, and every, I think he's excited, uh, from everything I've, uh, everyone I've talked to, it sounds like he's got a really good shot at, at, uh, elected over there. So I think that's great.
So with him being on the fire department, does it have anything like against it? You know how like you can't be a city employee and be on the city council?
I would think, you know, I was on the city council while I was on the fire department in Greenland as well. Um, basically what it's meant to be is as long as Greenland really doesn't pay our salaries. Okay? So if it has anything to do with, with money that would directly affect him as an individual for pay, he would probably abstain from something like that. But other than that, there's really nothing that he couldn't vote for.
I'm excited for it.
Yeah, we might have to go watch some of those.
Yeah, you're next. Chief, wait. Is he going?
No, I was just looking, uh, so Chief Meyer put some, some extra statistics in the bracket for us this, uh, this month. Just make sure you check those out. There's some good numbers in there.
I'm trying to change it up.
Yeah.
Uh, the budget's really good. We are up, our bank balances are up two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the year and our departments are all under budget, um, for a total of five hundred and nineteen thousand, um, this year. Our sales taxes stayed really steady at a seven percent increase. Um, so I, I think that's probably where we're gonna level out for the year. And on the water report, it's not, doesn't look as nice as the cities. Uh, we, we're down six hundred, or sorry, sixty-six thousand dollars in our bank balances. Um, and if you look at the bottom portion down there, you can see that, uh, five thousand of that is just, uh, money that we've lost in the sewer, um, which is better than it was a couple of months ago. We were at sixty-nine thousand. So these drought months have helped those bank balances tremendously. Um, not that I pray for a drought, but we, we need a few months, uh, of dry to continue to, to get us, we're a little bit better off, um, to start next rainy season next year. Um, other than that, uh, we do have, uh, the department heads all have budget worksheets that they're gonna start on. Hopefully by the end of October, we'll be able to, uh, be ready for a budget workshop. If not, it'll be the rest of November. Um, they've kept me busy. We've had three vehicle insurance claims recently and a worker's comp claim. So, um, I, I like it when I forget how to do those because it's been so long since we've had one, but they've kept me up on this, this month. So, um, other than that, I don't think I have anything.
I don't think so either. I don't either. Did you guys have any questions for her? Okay, sorry. So, um, one thing that I, I did forget to, to mention was Isaac and I met with Washington Water Authority this month, um, talking about water capacity, um, and what it would look like for us to tie into Washington Water Authority, uh, for a redundancy, uh, loop basically. So we currently have, uh, our main water line, we get it from Fayetteville. It comes down Highway seventy-one. Um, I think everybody knows where the pump stations are and the meter is up on seventy-one. Uh, and we have, uh, a contract that needs to be renewed and negotiated with Fayetteville. Uh, and that is going to tie into the, the sewer negotiations that, that are, uh, you know, coming with Fayetteville. But we say all that to say that they, in our contract, they have to supply us with X amount of gallons per minute. Okay? And while we're not, uh, we're not at a situation where that's becoming a problem yet, um, we're just looking as, as we do start to grow, as some of these, uh, developers are coming into West Fork, we're wanting to just make sure that we are prepared. Uh, and if something were to happen on that line, uh, we're essentially out of water. I mean, we have our storage, but that's, that's all we have. So, um, we did find out that Washington Water Authority has, uh, huge capacity at, uh, Campbell Loop, uh, the overpass at Campbell Loop. So there's a, there's a twelve inch line. They made a big loop out there in two thousand and eight expecting, uh, some big expansion in that area that didn't come. Um, and so we're not doing anything with that other than talking to them about options. Would it be an option, um, you know, if, if they do bring, um, a main line south from there, uh, would it be an option to set us a meter that we can tie into that if, if something did happen, we have, we have water? So, uh, again, we're not, we're not doing anything with that yet other than just talking about possibilities. So.
Better to talk about it now than when you need it.
I, I think so. Yeah.
Would that also give us any influence on negotiating with Fayetteville on water rates if we had a second source?
Um, that source probably wouldn't. So Washington Water is, uh, they're a little bit higher. Uh, they, they're actually paying more for their water than what we are currently. And so if we were buying from them, then it's, it would be at, uh, a much higher rate than what we're currently. Um, so it, it's not something that we're looking.
Would it be a good safety valve?
Yes, definitely a good safety valve, but at, at the current time, it doesn't look like it would be something we would want to, uh, replace what we currently have.
Right.
Yeah. So. Okay. And so before we move into old business, I should've mentioned this during Isaac's report as well. We are still having issues with recycling. Um, I don't know how many of you have driven past the, the recycle trailers. Um, but by Monday, uh, they're a disaster. Um, and I gotta tell you, I'm surprised by it. I thought that recyclers would, would take more pride in self-managing, um, a system that was made available for them. We have issues, um, so the way we've changed things, we've made it a twenty-four hour, seven day a week recycling, uh, but it's self-managed. Uh, Boston Mountain Recycling brings the trailer over, picks up the full and takes it back. They're having trouble keeping, uh, employees and so, and they're having trouble keeping, uh, empty trailers. Uh, I, I don't know if more people are recycling out of the county. Um, theoretically, West Fork provides curbside recycling to the residents. Um, so I don't know how many people inside the city limits are using those, but I do know that it's being used. That's a good thing. Uh, the problem is, uh, in some cases, they're throwing trash in there, uh, which then contaminates the recyclables, uh, so they're not being recycled. Uh, and then you drive over there, and you've got trash out on the ground. Uh, a lot of Isaac's crew spends Monday mornings picking up trash. So, uh, I say all that to say that we, we are still looking at some options there, um, and what can be done. Uh, I would like to continue to offer the service, uh, even though, like I said, I feel like we're offering it to the county. I still think that's a good service for us to offer. Uh, but I just hate, hate seeing trash. Um, so anyway, we're not doing anything, not making any big changes. No need to run around telling people that mayor's closing recycling. Uh, but, uh, we are gonna have to make some change. Something's gonna have to change, uh, in regard to that. And I don't, I don't have the answer to that yet, but we are looking at some different offen, options with, uh, Boston Mountain, uh, with inland. Uh, so there, there will be something changed there if, in the near future, because I'm, I'm assuming that what is currently taking place over there is gonna continue to take place until we make a change. So.
Do we have cameras over there that we can?
We don't. We don't. Okay. That was all the backpedaling I needed to do. Next, old business, uh, Resolution two zero two-two dash zero six, a lease for eighty-five Main Street. We have that lease in our packet. Is there some discussion from the audience on that? Is that what you were wanting to talk about earlier? Okay. I'll, I'll get to you. Is there any discussion on the council?
So I was under the impression that we were entering into an agreement with Tom Terminella, but it says here with Monica's Meadow LLC. Can you explain why it's not in agreement with him and he's having to use a different LLC to come into contract with us?
So what I can tell you is Monica's Meadow LLC is his wife's LLC, um, and he asked that the name be changed to that.
Is there a reason for that?
Not one that I've discussed with him.
So it's still the family? It's just a different member of the family?
Yes.
But there's a reason why it can't be his name.
I'm sure there is.
It does show that he's the one that's gonna sign it.
He's probably gonna sign it as an agent. If I was.
And they may, he may change that. When he gets this, this draft, he may change that name.
Nothing else on the council yet?
Why does this say, um, in the first paragraph, the monthly amount of five fifty-five, but then down here it says, um, if you take eight oh five minus two fifty-five, five fifty, like I didn't, is there something that's?
Oh, so you're saying it should be five fifty-five or five fifty in both spots?
Yeah, like it doesn't add up.
Yeah. So it should be five fifty-five in both spots. Is that correct?
Uh, I'm asking.
Or the two fifty?
No, it should be five fifty in both spots, right?
Yeah. Unless, unless the two fifty-five is wrong. One of those is wrong.
One of those is wrong.
So what the idea there was, uh, what we had discussed was, um, a thirty-year lease with, um, with a credit for up to two thousand dollars in repairs. And so what we were trying to do is just explain the difference.
I got that, but I don't like five bucks.
Five bucks. No, you're right. Um.
Over thirty years.
Two thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But I thought I heard you say two.
So we do need to get that. Um, I think it should be, what's the math on it?
It's either gonna be five fifty or.
Or five fifty-five.
For five, what, what rent is he gonna pay? Does he wanna pay the two fifty-five rent or two fifty?
Eight oh five rent minus.
So eight oh five is amortized amount, or less than rent amount is eight oh five minus, what's the credit?
Two fifty thousand?
Fifty.
But what is it supposed to be? Two hundred, two hundred thousand divided by thirty years is fifty-eight sixty-one divided by twelve.
I bet the rent's two.
There it is, divided by twelve. So it should be five fifty-five is the, the credit amount. So eight hundred and five minus five fifty-five is two hundred and fifty. So it should be five fifty-five on both. So the improvement credit.
Two fifty-five should be two fifty?
Yeah.
Eight oh five minus?
Yes.
Five fifty-five.
Yeah.
Also on our catch, Marty. Um, item number eleven, the maintenance and repair. Um, so the city will be responsible for the outside of the building and the grounds. Is that right or? Did I, I just wanna make sure I read that.
I thought the city was gonna just mow.
So you're right. We should, that should be. So the structural portions of it should be on the less E.
Okay.
And the less or should be doing the, the mowing.
Okay. So the first sentence should be less E will at his sole expense keep and maintain the structural exterior portion of the.
So we can use the first, less order of less E, you guys?
I think that's the only.
And then.
Yeah, I think that's it. The rest of that paragraph, everything seems right. So I think we took out the, the part where the less E was, uh, responsible for the mowing. But as it came out, it put us, it was less or maintaining the structural.
So we are going to?
No, 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 no.
We're gonna mow.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna mow. We're mowing around it anyway.
Yeah.
So that's, that was the intent is just to get, get the mowing part out of it to where that's on us.
Okay. Okay.
Are you seeing anything else there, Tom? As far as that paragraph?
Oh, that paragraph?
Yeah. I think, I think everything else is less E, less or correct.
We didn't track changes on the, it was hard to compare the two.
Yeah.
And the formatting was difficult. We have, we have a floating paragraph eight, which I'd love to get rid of, but I've tried to and I can't. Just I can't get rid of the eight spaces. Well, we'll try.
You know, that went up and then this was like, I didn't know if the number got up there and like, because this, about the signs.
Yeah.
The floating eight?
No, I think the floating eight.
Is part of eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
Did they revise, did they do their changes?
Anything else, Marty?
I think that's all I saw.
I have another question, and it's perhaps spelled out clearly, and I just don't understand the verbiage. But we own the building, they're paying to upgrade and fix up the building, for lack of a better word. Sorry, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. So what if they were to go to a bank, get a loan for the two hundred thousand, however much it takes to fix the property? And then default on that loan and not be able to pay it back? Because that's a potential thing. Then we own the property, but then if they can't pay the bank back for the money they may have loaned. Typically, a bank would want to foreclose or take their property back if they have supplied money for property. So then, but then we would own the property, but they're the ones that could be defaulting. So then what would happen to that property and to the city?
Well, they can't put that property down as collateral because they don't own it.
Okay, so thank you, that helps me think about it differently.
He would have to provide some other collateral besides the, the building, you know, to borrow that money.
Okay. So then we would still have our building fixed, but then they would take something else from them that they provided as collateral.
Correct.
Okay, that makes me feel a little better.
See, we'd have to own the building to actually be able to borrow it.
By the way, that's how it should work.
Wow, that's true.
But that's kind of the question I was wondering too. Can a material lien be filed on the city of West Fork if the materials are not paid for? You see what I'm saying, like the boards and all that, just like she's saying, can somebody put a material lien?
No, I was, I was going to defer to you, I think, I think that's spelled out, but...
If, if, if he's buying material, we're not buying it. So there would be no primity with us, with the city. So there would, there wouldn't be a lien as against the city. Now, but the next question should be, well, wait a minute, if it's installed in the city's building and that's covered in some lien somewhere, can they go in and get it out of the building? And the answer is probably yes, they could probably go in and get it out of the building. They don't want to do that. It'd be really hard for them, they should do better, they should get their guarantees some other way. In other words, paying cash upfront if they're going to loan to someone who doesn't own the building. And that I think would be pretty common. In other words, you're not going to go in, you're going to, you're not going to go do work on someone's building that they don't own. Because you know you can't lien that, you know, property very easily. So you're probably going to demand cash upfront if they don't own the thing that you're going to improve as a crafts person. And then as a salesperson, you're going to get your money upfront, right? I think. I would say that getting out of the building would be difficult.
They could come and get their material.
It's conceivable, yes, but it'd be, it'd be hard, but yeah, they could take it back out. It'd be real simple, it'd be, if, if they couldn't get their money and they couldn't get it back out, we, the city, would be unjustly enriched, right? Wouldn't be just for us to keep that, the hard work and the material of somebody else in the building. But that's having to go through a lawsuit that would be difficult for them.
Anything else?
I'm also reading here that less E shall submit the repair plan upon execution of this lease and shall have two years to complete the repair plan. So basically, he wouldn't have to kind of do anything for like a year and a half? So would he be paying us like a year and a half only two hundred and fifty dollars a month? That's in page two, the second paragraph, above number two.
So we put the two years in there as a stop loss? So that something has to be done or everything is null and void? And where part of that came from is, do you guys remember the lease we were talking about with the cell tower? Yeah, you forgot.
Yeah, kind of, and...
Do you know where they put the cell tower?
No.
Yeah, I don't either. So the, the point was that they have to have this in place within two years or, basically, they have two years to have it finished. They, they can't drag along forever doing a little bit of work here and a little bit of work there.
Right.
Yeah.
And then still only paying a small amount.
Anything else on the council? Okay. Anybody in the audience have something to say? Yes, ma'am?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
And number three, use of premises. Can you help me understand how the city defines light commercial uses?
Well, how would you define that?
I have the code, that's current, current.
Okay.
And so in commercial, the way we're zoned right now, it really leaves it open to, when the thing falls under commercial.
We don't have a light commercial.
We are, we will, under what we're, we're working on, we will, and we have a definition between those two, but yeah, right now we don't currently.
And so, that's, that's true, this is today. I would say that, and, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think that we're referencing our current code in this paragraph. We, we are referencing light commercial. And so I think that we could certainly, if, if this went into heavy commercial, which would be, say, Harps or... What, I mean, what else can we think of that could be heavy commercial?
Gas station, tire shop.
Gas station, tire shop. I think with, in the terms of the lease, we, we have a legal argument there.
So what is light commercial then in the, in the new code?
We're going by hours of operation is going to factor into it and density, how parking space like, so size of buildings, size of lot, parking requirement. That's how we're going to decide what group is going to be for, in there, the, the different densities of commercial.
Take itself whatever.
It could be office, work, right? So walk-up office and like detail.
That's kind of how I interpret that as a office type.
And that's what I understood was the intention of the use for this building, but the way that this reads, it concerns the citizen, that's, and then there's an adjacent property owner that that leaves us open to them changing it to anything that would fall under commercial zoning without coming back to the council for consideration and approval to make sure that that is what the city would really like to do with that precious piece of property that's very unique for the city and as well as if that's going to be compatible to that neighborhood at the time that they would change it and that they're, that we're just open to them changing it at will without any checks and balances if, if for some reason they, they don't want to use it as an office anymore or, because it's my understanding that this isn't just Mr. Terminella that's, that it's also anyone that's under his agents and anyone that works for that LLC, is the way that I'm reading it, if that's appropriate. So say in twenty-five years or whatever, say he, they can do, who knows what, lots of ideas, right? Lots of ideas and new things happening in this world today. Who knows? So that's my concern in my question.
And I think you have a point. Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, we had, on your street, we had a grocery store that's now a lumberyard, right? And that fits within the code as a lumberyard. So you're right, I still fall back to this piece of property. A building that's smaller than this room with less parking than this building has. I think that it limits itself to the intensity of, of commercial applications just by its, its size and...
I don't know, it's like scooters is considered a light commercial operation, but you know, they use very little space, the drive-through coffee, so I just... And from a personal standpoint, you know, Jerry was basically our alarm clock every morning for like over twenty years because every morning looking out our bedroom and bathroom windows, if he was already there and I wasn't up and getting ready for school, I knew I was late. So that's the proximity and just from a personal standpoint, the impact of the usage level that, from a personal standpoint. And then of course, the philosophy of work, so.
Anything else?
Things I wanted to offer for your consideration.
Anything else?
And then I did have a question about the process of repair plans, like what is, is that typical? For when we make changes to city property and city buildings, that that, that repair plan is monitored? I'm not familiar with that process, is that the typical process that it's monitored by the mayor? Or is that usually the process to city council? How does that work for most city property?
So typically, if, if we were going to, like when we repaired this building, the mayor usually negotiates it, but it comes to the council for final approval on stuff like that?
And so will that happen with this?
If, if we think that it's necessary, sure. I mean, that's up to the council. Yeah?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm glad to see the council's asking questions and good questions and everybody here. And I, I can't speak to the details of the lease itself. But having had quite a bit of experience in real estate, and I all know the rule of law of real estate is location, location, location. And what that building is right there is, which I told the planning commission, is the piece of, the small piece of property with the best view of anything in West Fork. It overlooks the, the park, it's a nice shady spot, you sit there, you can hear the stream down below. Now, recently, in the last fifteen or so, we talked about a new bridge, remember that? And so we don't know where the bridge is going. So go and set a plan out, say, so the bridge is going to go here, you know, they, decide where it's going to go. So we don't know if that building is in the line of where the bridge is going to be. And the bridge is also going to have a pedestrian area to it. So if the bridge is basically where it is, the pedestrian area will bump into that piece of property. So you're talking about cars and stuff like that, that could be a, it's, it will be a different piece of property, is what I'm saying. So usually, when people have a piece of property, they think about selling it or long-term lease. They, they don't really want to do it when there's some impending major change, which is that bridge, well, what that bridge will do. So I'm just suggesting, I don't know, I asked the people, does the city need the money? You know, they don't need the money, why? Why get into getting rid of a prime piece of, of a property there, tying it up for a long time? You don't need the money and, you know, you don't know what's going to happen. It may, that thing, you may think it's worth this much now, after they give you a where they're going to put the bridge, it may be worth nothing or it may be worth three times as much. So I, in my, I don't see the, I don't see my way of doing this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question to add to what she said. It says, "The repair plan shall be delivered to the mayor of West Fork at the addresses for notices sent forth herein and contain the following information." And it has, you know, like complete list of items, conditions, repairs. And like she was saying, is that normally done on our buildings? Not that I'm aware of, because like if it was the fire department, you know, they, the chief would decide what was needed. They would talk amongst it, if it's in the budget. So I, I kind of have a problem with that, because why doesn't it come like to the city, to the, to the council?
Misty, if you would like for it to come to the council, we can certainly do that.
It has nothing to do with you.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
Because what I'm saying is, is this contract is for thirty years. How many mayors have we had in the last thirty years? And how many could we possibly have in the future thirty years? So who, so like Mr. Terminelli, if he had been, if it was from today back thirty years, how many different mayors would he have had to go to constantly? Or from today, moving to the next thirty years? I mean, none of us, and, and that's what I'm trying to say, is, is he would have had to went to a lot of people instead of just coming to the council, even though, yes, the council changes, but there's more eyes than just one. And we know that we've had several may, mayors and different personalities. So I would even think it's in his best interest to come to a council versus a mayor that we had one year ago, two years ago, or twenty-two years ago. I would think he would want it to come to the council.
But then he might be waiting a month instead of stopping by the day he needs it done.
It's two years. It has to be finished in two years. That process finishes in two years, Misty.
Which process?
The process of, of that repair and improvement.
So you're saying the initial two hundred thousand investment repair, not ongoing repairs?
Right, right.
I'm saying ongoing repair.
The thirty years, if I'm correct, the thirty years was put in there to...
That's the lease term.
Yes, but it was also in there to, I don't know, what's the word I'm looking for?
To, to try to compensate him for the amount of funds that he's putting forth into the building.
Right.
So we are trying to give, we're trying to get a fair rental market value for the property, but also get the building fixed without us having to spend any money on it. Now, Mr. Winkler's been in the real estate business for a long time. He can probably tell you how many buildings that he has came in and said, "I will put up X amount of dollars to fix your building if you will lease it to me." Right, I mean, that's, none. The idea is that we are trying to, we're trying to say, yeah, you've put this money in, that is prepaying your lease.
So I...
Or a portion.
So we shouldn't necessarily get hung up on the thirty years, it's not like he, he may or may not.
In a perfect world, he leaves in, in two years.
But it also says, Marty, if you remember, that, that, you know, with a notice of ninety days.
Yeah, there is a, there is an escape.
A stamp four by the city.
Out of twenty-two.
Notice, yeah.
But now, he, he come to us planning on offices, an office building. Why can't we put that? And if he wants to change it, bring that to the council?
We can.
I'd like that.
Tom?
For it to be used as offices, if he's going to change in any way, he's going to have it approved by the council.
We can write in restrictions, you know, to take care of that commercial issue. We can definitely write that more specifically, that the anticipated use is, well, is it more real estate? Office, mayor?
It was initially, what we talked about was a design office for an architect and some, basically, meeting space for developers.
We could say quiet commercial then, you know, we could describe what quiet commercial is, mayor, we could say those things.
And if he wants any changes, it has to come to the council.
It does say leased exclusively for quiet, light commercial uses, uses and normal associated uses.
And it does go on in that paragraph to talk about, you know, he will, the less E, leasing will comply with all the laws and ordinances and the preservation of the, of the premises. So I would think that would be a little protection maybe, Tom?
Walter, we could take what we're anticipating, you know, and get with Juliette, and take what we would define as light commercial uses and start.
Exactly, that's, that's what we're looking for right now, is the best way to differentiate.
We can drop that into this lease, that list basically, or lease a, a truncated part of that list so that we would know what the definition is, instead of a full definition, we can just do.
Sure. Does that satisfy the council? I will say, real quick, part of that, Misty, the reason that's listed out like that partly is just so that we do have some... We're not saying, yes, go rebuild it, right? We're saying... We're saying, bring it to somebody, let us approve it.
I would like it to be more like Christie and Isaac.
Then that is surely...
Well, because, because that's more their department, I mean, no.
No.
Well, you, you are...
You really don't know anything about it.
I got that, I got that.
I'm sorry, or what about, you know, like one fifty, or, okay, twenty-five years from now? You know?
I'm not sure. So you know.
It's only two years. That process lasts two years.
Okay, I guess that I did not see that that process...
It has to be done within two years.
Right, but I guess I thought, well, if he decided later on, he needs to spend or...
Basically, two years.
That he was just wanting that to...
You can't change it after the two years without coming to somebody at the city and getting approval.
Anybody but you.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm still just a little bit confused.
Oh my gosh, I did not say that.
Dina, what did you have?
So, I was just thinking about what Mr. Winkler shared. So, I mean, I had, I'm gonna be very honest, I hadn't put those two things together. Like, if we do widen the bridge and add a pedestrian pathway there, that that could change, you know, the impact on that property. So what if the council decides to approve this and he starts making improvements, invests money, and then we get a new bridge? And then we're like, oh, this building's not gonna be here anymore.
Well, such a good question. And Dawn, believe it or not, I actually thought of that prior.
I had no doubt.
So I, I don't know what paragraph it's in, but we...
It's page two, paragraph two, white enjoyment, about the bridge.
No, there's, there's specific wording in there that if, if the bridge does take up some of that property, we have to be held harmless because of that. So it's noted beforehand that we are trying to get a new bridge. If it wipes the property out, we, and has anybody found that piece?
I was impressed I was actually in there, 'cause I read it.
Number two? Oh, that's in, okay, I'm sorry.
I guess I don't know.
Well, that says the land, but if it takes part of the building, if something takes off of the building...
Well, we're gonna have to do side of our water lines if it takes the building.
The state's not gonna wanna mess with our water lines again.
No, it ain't gonna take...
They're gonna wanna build that bridge.
A little north, right? The other side's a lot easier.
They're gonna go north of that.
I will say that, so we don't have a design on the bridge, but the discussions with Chad at Arkansas, the road department, is that the pedestrian path would be on the north side of the bridge. Currently, we have sidewalk on the north side of the bridge. No, I mean, we have an actual sidewalk coming up plus... So the idea was that, in my mind, we would keep the pedestrian path on the north side of the bridge.
Coming up Robinson?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I said pleasant, sorry. It'd be nice to have one from Pleasant all the way down to Robinson.
It would be nice, I like that idea.
Yes, ma'am.
This restaurant under light, light commercial?
No.
Too much traffic.
And then, do we have any concerns?
But if they were, what kind of restaurant would you... We'll put Ty.
No restaurants, it's better for Ty.
The rocks on the bluff, do we, I think, do we have any concern just as a city? Just something to consider if we want things built there or not built there? Keeping it natural?
So it's only allowing him to modify the current building? Not build other things?
Not build other things, like decks or...
No, nothing on the property, just the building.
A deck? Yeah, we'd probably allow a deck.
Inside the fence, correct?
Yes, yes.
On the rocks that like overlook the...
Inside the fence?
That's a separate parcel anyway, is that fifteen feet, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's a separate parcel in between that and the...
There's a beach, that wide strip there.
But no, we're not, we're not going to give, and I'm speaking for all of us, so correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you. We are not about to give anybody a permit to build something out over the rocks.
No. Yes, they would still have to get a permit to do anything. So there's still control there as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, I know we talked about this one other time, about like, it's only in the fence end part, and supposing they took a bunch of it for the road, that will not be, the fence won't be moved, the back fence towards, on down the river. That's not gonna, where it would expand it and say, okay, well, they took half of the land down in front, so we're gonna add on to the back, down the block a little ways.
It's certainly not in anybody's plan that I'm aware of.
I mean, it's restricted to just...
It's restricted to just that part, that's the only parcel that, of that parcel, we only changed the zoning of that one piece. All right, any other discussion on the council?
Yeah, one more thing. So, is the rent set at eight hundred and five dollars a month?
Yes.
For thirty years?
Yes.
Okay, my thought was, is what was, what would rent have been for a building like that, say, back in nineteen ninety-two, thirty years ago? You know, and then what will rent be thirty years from now? So, do you see what I'm saying?
I do, I certainly do.
Like, if, if used to, back twenty-five years ago, you got it for, you know, like, four hundred dollars or three hundred and fifty for a little space like that? Well, say, twenty years from now, is that not worth, say, twelve hundred?
I bet it is.
So why are we sticking, why, why do we not have something set in there to like, increase it a certain percentage every year?
My answer...
We can tell them they have to move out if they don't wanna read our guidelines.
So, well, we are in this, we are saying that for this, we're doing a thirty-year lease for that amount. At that time, it goes to whatever, if they wanna lease it after that, we're saying it goes to whatever...
No, I'm saying like...
No, no, I'm getting there. So, you're exactly right. The, the amount for that lease, we're saying it's static. It could be more, it could be less. So right now, it's not worth eight hundred and five dollars a month. But before this lease is over, yes, it will be worth more than that. But, I'm gonna let Marty explain this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna broach the topic. Have you ever heard of the time value of money? Okay, so, two hundred thousand dollars today is worth how much? Two hundred thousand. What is two hundred thousand dollars worth thirty years from now?
Who knows?
Your house payment ain't going up.
So, what my, what my point is with that, Misty, is are we...
But the value of my house is worth more than it was thirty years ago.
That's right. And so, my point is, he's paying two hundred thousand dollars today, right? He doesn't get the time to stretch that out. If he's gonna fix that, he's gotta pump the money into it now. So, he is taking a hit there. He's taking a hit there, yes, are we gonna lose out on potentially some rent in year twenty through thirty? Yeah, we might, but... We might, but we also might not be able to do anything with that building.
Are we gonna be scraping the blocks up off the ground when it fall down?
We're gonna have that problem before this lease gets negotiated.
You know, and also, also, we're not in this to make money. That's not, that's not the city's objective, is not to go renting properties for money.
To obtain the property.
So with the changes that we have suggested so far, which, we're changing less E, less O to less E in one part. We are, we are fixing the two hundred and fifty dollar portion to make that make sense. Somebody help me with the other piece. Tom is going?
We're gonna do some, I'll get with Walter, we'll get a list. We'll get a, of a small list of light commercial to cover the things you were talking about. Meeting space, architectural space, designing space.
With those changes, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
What is that motion for? I don't care if it's to approve or deny.
To approve.
Okay.
The lease.
Okay. So we have a motion and second to approve the lease with the changes that have been noted. Tom, do we need to do a roll call on this or something?
No, sir, unless you want to, I mean, if you feel like there'll be a...
We'll try it with, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed say no?
No.
Roll call.
Typically, you want this to make sure that no mistake.
Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Linderberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dina McKnight?
No.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condon?
Yes.
So, that motion carries, six to two. Fantastic. It's not often that we get... Yeah, some opposition, that's good. It's healthy, isn't it, Steve? All right, item two of old business, the quitclaim deed for the drainage ditches and easements on Riverwood. I thought this was a simple project for an accomplished attorney such as what we have working for the city of West Fork. To show me how difficult it is, he has brought handouts, I think that's the right amount.
I have one to do here.
I already know, I've been through it.
Okay.
With the city.
So, Tom, I'll just let you go ahead and explain what you're, what you're running up against.
The very kind folks at Lindsey Military Industrial Complex have asked, have offered to give us the drainage, and you can see those eight separate pieces. And I think one's in use, Chad, we use one for a driveway right now. We're gonna use that next one to the north for something, I think, useful. So it's great to have them. They're not described anywhere, they've never been surveyed. So, what I think happened is when the, Don Pitts, the gentleman, late Don Pitts, who has both United, remember, he started United Bank and United Bill Holmes and Locomotion? He owned the property, he sold it or gave it to the University Baptist Church, who either sold it or gave it to Mr. Lindsey. And when they platted the subdivision, they platted the drainage that was required. But there's no separate description of it, so to give it to us, what, what property records like is to know where the thing is and have it described by boundaries. We can't do that, and so we're trying to figure out a way to get this into a deed. And I think what we're gonna do is just use the parcel number, which, believe it or not, those eight pieces are under one parcel number, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Right, Kristy?
That's correct.
So, we'll try to get a deed filed with one parcel number, and if we can get it signed by the good folks at Lindsey, then we'll be able to do that. That property doesn't belong, well, in fee, that property belongs to probably the developer or maybe the neighboring landowners. But in, in truth is, for, as long as the city exists, no one can do anything with that property, but use it for drainage or whatever we wanna use it for. So, just so y'all know, we're not in danger of losing the right to be on the property, but to get actual fee ownership of it is just a little bit of a chore. And we'll have a quitclaim deed that looks something like this pretty soon. Hopefully by, over the resolution, 'cause we can't accept property unless y'all say so by resolution. We can't buy it, lease it, sell it, unless, or receive it, unless y'all okay that. So we'll bring you a resolution once we figure that out. If everybody has an idea, Dawn, let me know.
I'll fight with you.
Still working on it, Frank. So, could we get a motion to table that?
Take a motion to table.
Second.
No, a motion and second to table that. All those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Moving into new business, review and approve ARPA projects and spending. So in the back of your packet, you'll see a list of multiple projects, many of which are completed. There's a couple still out there to be completed, and then on the back page of that, you'll see the remaining unallocated funds. What do you need here, Kristy?
So mainly in the minutes, I just need it noted that we are adding a new project, which is the number three on that page, the 2022-09, for the closed sewer plant. We're taking fifty thousand, some of it from previous...
Number three on the second page.
Yes. Some of it from the previous projects that we had completed, but still had money left over, and a little bit of it from the new money that we got this year. So that we can, since we're doing the sewer plant on our own, we're wanting to use that money for that. So that's the only thing new, the rest was just an update on the project somewhere we stand on them. But we need to make sure that we approve that new project on there.
Take a motion to... Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the council?
So there's still two hundred and forty-three thousand or two hundred and ninety-six?
Two hundred and forty-three that we haven't allocated.
Got you, okay.
Is that all you had on that joint?
Yes.
So we have a motion and second, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Last item of new business, resolution 2022-07, to approve the 2023 county tax millage. So this is what we do each year, it's our five mills that come from the county. If we don't approve it, we don't get the five mills. These five mills, I've talked about in the past, when I've done the calculations to show you what a piece of property's value goes up when somebody develops it. That's the five mills we're talking about. Any discussion on that?
I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Other business, so in our last meeting, we had a small discussion over real property ordinances and updates that potentially need to be talked about there. Mr. Winkler came to us, told us that he was doing a no-mo May in another project. And we kinda came to the understanding that while he was doing that, the city was enforcing the ordinances that we currently have on the books. Alderman Collins has pointed out that the city needs to do a little bit of job, better job of enforcing our ordinances on ourselves, and I agree. So we have that as other business. Is that something we wanna talk about tonight? How do you guys wanna handle that? Last month, we said, let's move it, move it to the next month and have a discussion. Do we, do we want to, do we wanna pull out the maintenance of real property ordinance and work through that? So we've, we've done that with some other ordinances. I say we, because I've worked through a couple of them, brought them to the council and discussed it, but would the council like to get a copy of the real maintenance ordinance and work through it? And come up with some, some better wording on that, okay? So will everyone be available to swing by City Admin and pick that up? Or do you wanna email to you? How do you want it?
Email.
Drop off a, if I get a paper copy. All emails are buried in there, if anybody wants that property.
Okay, all right. So we'll do that, and then we will, you guys wanna put that on the next meeting to take that up?
Yeah.
Item two, Planning Commission, open house for input on zoning changes, October twentieth, six o'clock, from six to eight at the fire department, it's drop-in. Chief Myers has agreed to do some hamburgers and hot dogs for us. I figure the school, when they want people to show up, they feed them. I've, I've tried and tried and tried to scream from the rooftops, and people aren't showing up. So we're gonna try to feed them, see if that'll help. Winkler will even have a hamburger for you.
Are you gonna have all the fixings for the hamburgers? All the fixings for the hamburgers?
Yeah, there's a really good black bean.
We'll come over, we'll come over and pull some weeds at your house and log one of those up into a burger.
Fantastic.
It's all right, uh, so that's what we're trying to do with that, uh, we are trying to get a portion of this zoning code. I don't wanna use the term passed by the end of the year, because I don't want people to run with that, take it out of context, but we're trying to get some deadlines in place to get it, uh, moving forward and get it through the approval process. I wanna get it to a point where your eyes are on it and the council, uh, is making, you know, whatever the final adjustments are so that we can get votes, uh, hopefully in approval of something better than what we have. Uh, again, I'm not going for perfection on this, I'm going for, let's get it better and let's continually work on this. Yes.
Gotta start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere, so.
I need to go down and know that lot at the library. I'm willing to share.
Fantastic.
I make a motion to Dawn.
I like that. So a couple of things I do wanna talk about, I talked about the recycling. I think West Fest has already been recognized, that it was great, good work, thank you.
And thank you to the Boy Scouts also, they done our trash and they do that every year.
So I talked about water redundancy with Washington Water Authority. Dawn, I don't know how I came up with that idea, crazy. Well, so I would like to, um, talk to the council about one other thing, uh, and I want your approval for this. Arkansas Game and Fish is looking for property, uh, to build a, uh, a national, uh, game and fish, uh, center. It's, it's huge, they've, it's been in the newspapers, Springdale said they don't have property for it. Uh, Rogers said they don't think they do, um, I don't have any property for it either, but I would sure like, uh, council's approval to, uh, fill out the form telling Game and Fish, we would like for them to spend their fifteen to twenty million in the West Fork area.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
I second it.
What better place to do it than right here?
Where there's a good property out of the county and rivers.
So I, I don't know all the details yet, but I do know that they, they have a, uh, online, they will have a form that cities can say, yes, we would like for you to look at our city as a potential for that. Uh, that's what I'm asking, uh, to do, is, uh, I want, I wanna fill that out, I want them to come live to West Fork, uh, for that.
Where you get that at?
ArkansasGameandFish.com, uh, all right. You guys really wanna discuss trying to sell that, that property?
Oh, we got open.
It's perfect for what they want.
All right. Yeah, that's right. We are talking about PUD on Thursday, so PUD is planned unit development.
It's a little special island of zoning.
Yes, uh, we've had it in the books for eons, to my knowledge, West Fork has never had anyone apply for a PUD. That is becoming more popular in, in other cities in, in, in developments, uh, throughout other codes. Uh, we have one applying at West Fork. The one that is applying at West Fork is that twenty-nine to thirty house subdivision.
From what I saw from here, it looks like they haven't really changed anything from the variance request, so that was thirty-one houses.
Thirty, it was a thirty-one, so they, they told us that the reason they've held off, they, they had to completely redesign the retention pond just because of the topography of the, the piece of property, but it's going with that, six to seven acres, um, where the RV park was looking at. We've talked about it prior, I think some of you have seen design work on that, I'm not sure. But that'll be Thursday at the planning commission. And then lastly, uh, hopefully, if Blair is up to it, we're gonna do ask the mayor on Friday, and Mr. Corns is gonna come sit in with me and just talk about, um, how school's going, what are some of the schools' needs, how development affects the school, that type of thing, so. With that, Alderman Collins?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no, that motion carries.